Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting on May 12, 2005. At this time, I'll ask for a roll call. Frank West here.
Lilia Maselli here.
Jacob Gior here.
Kevin Kyra here.
And Garrett DePalmer, I am here.
I'll ask everyone to stand for the pledge, please.
And to the Republic for what it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Unanimously approved. Mr. Slakel?
Yes, can we have a motion to approve the transmission of Treasury warrant 2545T? I understand there'll be one abstention.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Motion made seconded. All those in favor?
Approved.
Four zeros, one abstention.
One abstention.
One abstention. Now, we have, for third, it will be the approval of minutes from April 28, 2025. Do I have a motion to accept?
Second.
All those in favor? Now, we have our, we're early, 7:05 appointment. I'm going to pronounce the name wrong.
It's okay.
If you'd like to say it instead.
Mario Nurtorakis.
No, Nurtorakis. Come on up and have a seat here, please.
This is my wife Andrea.
Hi Andrea.
Hi.
This is a request to obtain a common vehicle license for property located at 279 Main Street. Like to?
Yeah.
Tell us a little about it.
Sure, so Samar's roast beef was my dad's for 20 years. I've been running it for the last 10 years, open and doing all the ordering. My wife helps me with the books, just running it for my dad. And he's retiring, so he's transferring the store over to me. And I'm really proud to serve everybody in Wilmington and just proud to have that restaurant, that particular restaurant, it just means a lot.
Wanted to wish your father a happy retirement.
Thank you.
Been an established business in Wilmington for many years.
And I have a lease for 20 more years.
All right.
Yeah, and he, um, sat, his lawyer signed an amendment, so he gave me the last eight months of his lease.
Wonderful.
So eight months, and then December 31st, I'll have another 20 years for me.
That's great, and I can come, you know, around 11 o'clock and get my roast beef.
Yes, you personally ask for me.
It's all documents here. Go ahead.
I just wanted to say, you know, continued good luck.
Thank you.
Like the chair said, happy retirement to your dad.
Yeah.
I remember Samar's when it was Jack in the Box, you'd talk to the clown at the, that was the way it worked.
I've heard all this, people come in all the time, "I used to come here when I was a kid," and we love that, you know?
And the bands, they used to have bands playing on the roof.
Someone send us a picture of that. How neat. And we want to print it, have it printed and framed and put in the store.
I don't see an entertainment license here.
I'm just, real quick, going through that as you were saying that, going entertainment, nope, nope.
Yeah, we keeping all the food the same. I might add on like hot wings or simple stuff, but everything's the same for, forever.
Well, you've been there long enough, you've prospered. I don't think anybody in Wilmington has not had one of your roast beefs.
Thanks.
I've had too many of your roast beefs.
I actually recognized your last name. People sighed their cards, I, you know what I mean, I was looking up there and I recognized.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
Thank you. Just wanted to congratulate, I love that, you know, you're keeping the tradition, it's being passed on to the family, and it's wonderful. I just, I love to hear that, it just, you know.
Thank you.
You don't see that, you know, these small businesses in families and stuff, you know, just keep thriving and being passed on, so I think it's wonderful, and obviously, I know, we all love it, but especially my kids, you know, as soon as they start driving, it's, you know, Samar's every night, so.
Thank you.
But no, it's a great establishment, and I'm thrilled to see that you're taking it over, so.
Thank you.
Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Can I make a motion to approve the license?
Second? All those in favor? Welcome to Wilmington again for 20 years.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, best of luck.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Have a nice evening.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
17:15, I'd like to announce that we will be doing a reorganization of the board, and I would like to nominate Frank West as the next chair of the Board of, the Select Board.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I would like to nominate Kevin Kyra as next chair.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think, yes, that's the way that would make sense.
Okay, at this time, I'll look for a vote for Frank West as the new chair.
If I may, is there usually some sort of discussion on this as the new person involved? I always got curious.
I just have to see if Mr. West will accept the nomination.
I will.
And Mr. Kyra?
Yes, I'll accept.
And?
I was thinking the same thing, Jake, I've never, I've sat through a reorganization of this particular board before. What's your thought?
Usually, we have a discussion.
Okay, bring it up for discussion.
It's up to the chair.
You'll bring it up for discussion. Mr. West, if you want to speak, or Mr. Kyra?
Well, one of the way to do this is that, I'll make a motion that we have both Mr. Kyra and myself, you know, or myself, Chair, vote for that, if you want a second, that's a discussion, I guess.
I am not gonna do that, no.
Okay.
What discussion would you, would you like? I've served for three terms, I was chairman seven years ago, you know, I make decisions based upon the best interests of the community, I speak when I have to speak and vote when I have to vote, I mean, is, you need a, what else would you, would you like?
Whatever you'd like to say, in defense of, you know, in.
I don't have to really defend mine.
Mr. West, do you have anything to say?
Again, I've been on the board now for, this is my, going into my third year of my first term, being back on the board, I was on the board prior from 2003 to 2005. Think I, think I can do a good job as Chair, and would, I guess, appreciate any support.
Now, Lil?
Thank you. I just want to preface all this, that this, and I hope no one on this board takes anything personally, this is not a personal, you know, my vote for Kevin, my nomination for Kevin is, is not, you know, a vote against Frank, it's just that I think we have a lot going on right now, we have a lot coming up the pipeline that we know of, we obviously don't know what could come up, and I just think, you know, Kevin, you know, he, he has a long history in municipal government, both personally, you know, in his professional job, and also serving on the board, you know, starting his fourth term. He hasn't been Chair now for seven years, not since I've been on the board, not that that matters, because it's not about, you know, taking turns, it's about who's best for the job at the time. I think we're just, we're gonna need a very strong leader, somebody who has, you know, historical knowledge, and institutional knowledge, and municipal knowledge, and I just think it's gonna be a very busy year, with everything we got going on between MBTA and schools and, you know, upcoming projects, and I just think Kevin's leadership skills and knowledge will really, you know, come in handy with that, so that is where, you know, my nomination for Kevin comes in. I feel like we are ultimately a young board, which doesn't mean that, you know, not in age, all of us, but, but I mean in experience, so, that's all. I just, like I said, this is, to me, this is not, you know, we're here to serve the town and the residents, and this is not about any of us at this table, it's about making the right decisions for the town and the residents, and, and that's the reason why I think, you know, I would feel really good having Kevin in that position. Thank you.
I'd like to speak. The reason I nominated Frank West was, I believe, the board will be turning the corners, having new ideas with a experienced, where he's had a board, he's been elected to the board prior to, I think he, Frank will push the issues, but I believe it's, it's just a new era. We've, do have a lot we have to do in town, there's a lot of projects coming up, and I believe Frank would be very level-headed in his decisions, and what he brings to the board is the Chair. I guess now we'll vote.
Yeah, I think it would, I think at this point in time, I would ask for, I think you should ask for a motion.
Ask for a motion to vote.
And then somebody would make a motion, seconded, and then if it gets seconded, then you have the vote.
I'll make a motion to vote Kevin Kyra as our next chairperson.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Kevin will sit, okay, and I will make a motion to have Frank as our next Chair. Do I have a second?
We can't have two motions.
Yeah, we have to vote on the first one first.
Oh, excuse me, you gotta vote for first, but first. Okay, all those in favor of Kevin as our next Chair? All those opposed? Two to three opposing three. Now, do I have a motion to?
Hold on.
I also think Frank's can go up in opposition.
Did you? I didn't, oh, yeah.
Why do we need an opposition vote if we have a?
That's why I didn't.
We don't need an opposition vote, Gary, we just need a.
The vote, the vote fails.
Yeah, vote fails.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, now we go to Frank West, do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to appoint Frank, somebody would need to make a motion to appoint Frank.
Appoint Frank?
Motion to appoint Frank.
And I will second it. All those in favor? And all those opposed, which we don't have to do. Mr. West, congratulations.
I was about to say, you need to leave the hot seat now.
We'll miss the tie.
I know that wasn't a unanimous vote, but hopefully by the end of my term, I'll, it'll be unanimous, you know, that I did okay, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may, like I said, that was not a vote against you, it was a vote for, and I totally support you sitting in that chair.
And so, so do I as well.
Just for the record.
Support you sitting in that chair as well.
Okay, so anyhow, thank you, I guess I'm here now, so we'll go on to Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have one communication, the memorandum from myself to the Select Board regarding the settlement of the Sprague Oil litigation regarding the Wildwood School. So as folks, the board obviously remember, but folks in the, in the audience watching on TV may remember, several years ago, there was the oil spill at the, the Wildwood School that resulted in requires for remediation and cleanup, the, the town instigated a lawsuit against a bunch of different entities, from the, the deliverer of the oil, to the oil company, and their insurers, and as the, the board already knew, but I think we wanted to make public, we did settle that for $940,000, and we've received those funds, and the settlements will go into the general fund, so I wanted to let the folks know that, even though the town and our insurer funded that cleanup immediately, we did recover the funds that the town expended in large part with, as a result of the settlement, and so the case is now closed, and we're gonna, we're, we've got these funds back to, to help make the town whole.
Great news. So we do have.
It'll take a little bit, get it easy.
Take it, take it.
Board to consider for Select, Select Board designees to various boards and committees?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So Board Consider number six, the, the, these are the current committees that have assign, assignees from the board to those committees, and at this point in time, the, the question would be, do all members want to retain their, you know, I mean, I think the board at this point in time sometimes shuffles up assignments or things like that.
Through the Chair. So I am on the senior center building committee, which will be wrapping up, I believe our last meeting will be next month in June, so that will go away, and if that's still, I see, you know, Greg's name still on the Wildwood School Building Committee, I believe you and, is that going away, or is, I mean, obviously, can't be Select Board, I don't know if he's gonna remain on the board, but.
Yeah.
Would you be looking for another person there, or?
So, this, this has been discussed, I think the, the goal would be to have the school building committee vote to add Greg as a citizen member.
Okay.
Whether or not the Select Board needs to appoint another member now, or wait until after the vote in September, there was really, there's not a ton to do between now and the end of the, and, and the summer, although we do have the OPM, so the, the appointment of a new OPM is, is one thing that's coming up.
Well, if that, if an opening, if, if something opens on that, to, to, I would like to be on the Wildwood Building Committee, I can't speak, so if that opening, I'd like to be considered to be the Select Board member on that.
Okay, so the thing is that we, we had one, right, we originally had Greg, I think it was, and then somehow, Kevin, do we nominate two, or?
It was always two.
My understanding is that there, in the original iteration of this building committee, there was an appointee and a, kind of a backup.
Right, that's right.
And then, as the, as the, that committee changed, again, this is prior to mine and Judy's time on that committee, but as that committee changed, basically, they incorporated all of the backups into regular, regular committee members, it wasn't just Kevin, it's a, there was, I think there was a backup school committee member.
That's a huge committee.
Who participates now, there's back, back, you know, so backups.
Mr. Chair, that, that's right, there was a designee from the Select Board, and then there was an alternate, I was the alternate, that attended all the meetings as well, and when it expanded, they just incorporated the alternates into the committee, so that's how that happened. Now, we got about two meetings left, if, if June 3rd's meeting appoints Greg as the, as the community individual, I'm sure it would be great to have Lil on board as the second selectman.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we?
I'd just like to throw my hat.
Select person.
Didn't even realize it, so don't worry.
We could put her down as a potential, and.
Yeah, I'm interested if there's a spot, if there's not, that's understandable.
After the June 3rd meeting, you said, so that would be our summer meetings, that would be what?
We have a meeting the next week, I believe, the first.
Whenever, I, like I said, I just wanted to express my interest on, if there is an opening, I'd.
Okay.
I'd like to be considered for it.
Mr. Palmer?
I'd like to be considered on, considered for that also, deposition.
Okay, any other comments on that?
On that one?
I just want to also, I don't sit on any board, so I would hope that I would, not trying to trump Gary, but I, once that, I don't have any designation, so.
And I would hope to remain on that committee.
Yeah.
If that is to be said, I don't.
Well, I think this, well, I think the purpose of this memo is to ascertain, do the people that are on these committees want to stay, and if there's openings, are there people interested in an opening? So, with that, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to resign from the Economic Development Committee, I believe that Jake is the Chair of the committee, so I think it would be great that he stay on the committee, I wouldn't, you probably wouldn't want to be Chair, but I think it would be great that you could be the Select, Select Board Designee.
Technically, I resigned, because I had to, but I'd love to be back on the board as the Select Board Rep.
I think that would be great.
It'd be much appreciated.
So, do we take a motion for that?
Yeah, I think it would just move to.
A motion to appoint Jake to the Economic Development Committee.
Okay, well, do you, well, do you need to?
Liaison.
Well, hold on, do you need to accept my resignation first, or is that just a done deal?
I don't think we, I don't think the board needs to, I mean, I, I think, just say, make a motion to appoint Jake in, in your place.
In my place, is that?
In my place.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I do want to say that there was a, there is a, an, an error on here, the, the Rink Committee is still a viable committee, and I believe that Kevin is the, is the.
Liaison.
The liaison to the Rink Committee. Just, just for folks to.
Okay, any further discussion on Select Board Designees to various committees?
No.
Okay, back to you, Mr. Slakel.
Okay, Board Consider number seven is the request from Diane DeGregorio for Wilmington Community Fund to use the municipal parking lot and Middlesex Ave on Saturday, September 20th, 2025, from 9:00 to 12:00, this is for the Town Shredding Day.
And there's no conflicts at all?
No conflicts.
Okay, is there a motion to?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
All right, Board Consider number eight, request from Abdullah K. Alhazema, I hope I got that correct, Tony's Ice Cream by Alex, to obtain a Hawkers and Pedders license to sell ice cream.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have all the, all the right paperwork, it's.
We do, and the, we have a recommendation for the Wilmington Police to recommend approval.
Okay.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
All right, Board Consider number nine, this is a Board Consider request from Jeff Vinuti, Bliss Point Meadery, to obtain a farmer's market winery license, sell wine at the 2025 Wilmington Farmer's Market. Again, there's a recommendation of approval from the Police Department.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. DePalmer, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Maselli, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
All right, Board Consider number 10, this is a request from Noel Powell, Aranapp Sellers Elsie, to obtain a farmer's market winery license to sell wine at the 2025 Wilmington Farmer's Market, so we're gonna have some competing wine sellers. This also has a recommendation of approval from the Police Department, Mr. Chair.
Is there a motion to approve?
Bless you.
Bless you.
Second, for a second?
I did first.
Okay, any discussion?
Bless you.
Bless you.
We'll discuss bless you. All in favor? Any opposed? Five oh. Okay, public comments, I think it's all the Board are considering?
Yep, there's all the Board is considering.
Public comments? Okay, announcements, any announcements from the board?
Oh, I have one, sorry, thank you. I just wanted to say I attended the, the art fair, the Wilmington Student Art Fair at the middle school on Friday night, it was Friday and Saturday, and I just wanted to congratulate all the students, artists that were chosen from grade school through high school, it's amazing, the talent, it's, just blows your mind, I mean, it was just very creative, great showing, it was packed, and I think this was, to me, it felt like there was more artwork on display than even in previous years, so it was just, it was a great community event, and it's just awesome to see the talent and the different types of, you know, art that all the children did, so I just wanted to shout them out and say great job.
Okay, any other announcements? I have one quick one, that I attended the Good Guy Award Friday night, and Terry McDermott, longtime Wilmington resident, longtime volunteer of various Wilmington committees, library, St. Thomas, former curator and member of the Historical Commission, was well-attended and well-deserved. So, any new business? Just curious, did we hear anything further regarding MBTA, or is that still, you know, based on the vote and all?
Yeah, so as the, as was discussed, that we're proceeding with the litigation, I had a, a first draft of a verified complaint come from our town council last week, we went through it, we added a, a bunch of facts, I've been working with Val and with our GIS expert in the Engineers Office to come up with some appropriate maps to, to kind of highlight some of the things that we're gonna be raising about the, the town's unique position, and so I sent a draft back to them on Thursday, and our, our goal, I mean, I have no doubt that we'll have the case filed before the, the next board meeting.
Okay, great. Okay, any other new business? Well, looks like we go on to important dates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. May 12th through May 16th, we have the Curbside Collection of Leaves and Grass, May 14th, that is Wednesday, we have a community forum on the repurposing of the former senior center of Bazell School here in Town Hall and the Auditorium at 6:30. On May 24th, there's the Decoration of Graves at the Wildwood Cemetery, starting at 8:00 AM, and the Decoration of Park Squares and Monuments. May 25th is the Rededication of Park Squares and Monuments, and the Memorial Shrine at St. Thomas of Villanova at 1:00, and the Veterans Monument at Town Common at 1:15. And then May 26th, there's the Memorial Day Parade at 10:00 AM, Memorial Day Ceremony at the Wildwood Cemetery, Veterans Lot, 11:00 AM, the town offices are closed Memorial Day. I remember fondly, the Memorial Day last year was the, my first kind of official act, even though I hadn't started the job yet, so.
Happy anniversary.
It will be, yeah, we're very close. May 27th is a, the next Select Board meeting here at Town Hall, Room 9, at 7:00 PM. May 31st, we have a Household Hazardous Waste Day at 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, the West Intermediate School Parking Lot. June 1st, we have Wilmington High School Graduation. Then June 3rd, we have a community forum on the new elementary school project at the Wilmington High School Large Instruction, Large Group Instruction Room at 6:00 PM. June 5th, we have Shawshank Tech's graduation. June 7th, we have a fishing derby at the Town Beach Silver Lake at 8:00 AM. June 8th through October 5th, we have the Farmer's Market at Town Common from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and as we have learned, there will be multiple wine sellers, so come out and get your, come out and get your, your beverages. June 9th, there's a Select Board meeting at Town Hall, Room 9, 7:00 PM. June 11th, there's Brush Drop Off at the Old Main Street, 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. June 14th, Brush Drop Off at Old Main Street from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. June 14th, there's also Townwide Yard Sale from 8:00 to 2:00. And also on June 14th, it's D-Day Commemoration at the Hardin Tavern from 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM, and those are the important dates, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, just on the Memorial Day Parade, I may have to miss that, I'll be recovering from hip replacement, just so, so you know, I may not be there, I'll make attempts to come, but. Mr. Chair, just on the Memorial Day Parade, I may have to miss that, I'll be recovering from hip replacement, just so, so you know, I, I may not be there, I'll make attempts to come, but not too sure.
So will you be at our next meeting?
I don't know.
Okay.
Again, I'll either do that, or if we could get a Zoom, as we've done in the past, set up, just in case.
Sure.
But wish you well, on behalf of the board, I wish you well on your surgery and a speedy recovery, and we'll have you jogging the next Memorial Day Parade.
Veterans Day, yeah, veterans.
There you go. Okay, that salute for service?
Yep.
Okay, we have our salute for service, is SP4, Michael Sullivan from the US Army, born Cambridge, Mass., July 11th, 1948, entered service in Cambridge, Mass. on August 28th, 1968, discharged in Oakland, California on April 1st, 1970, served as a cannoneer. When out of service, Mike worked as a policeman in Cambridge until he retired after 38 years, he attends all veterans' events and supports the Veteran Service Department in Wilmington any way he can. Michael's awards include the National Defense Service Medal, Vietnam Service Medal with 60 device, Vietnam Campaign Medal, Army Accommodation Medal, Overseas Bar, and two Purple Hearts. So on behalf of the board, we'd like to salute his service, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. With that, we have a.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Jake? All in favor? Well, thank you very much, and let's hope that the rest of my meetings as chair will be equally assured.